underway. We're eight minutes behind, so this is six. I will. Paddle to the metal. One, two, three, four. Okay, we're at Quorum, so we're gonna keep going. We're gonna welcome special services. We're gonna call to order work session 107. We are officially nine minutes behind. They're gonna try to keep us on schedule. We have till 12:30. I do wanna recognize, we have Andy Wherlin, the school liaison commander for Fairfax.
Pretty cool.
Who just walked out. I'm gonna acknowledge that Andy Wherlin just walked out the door. From Fairfax County Police Department. And Vicky Shope from our restorative justice program from FCPS. At the front. Okay, so off we go.
Yes, thank you. We asked them to join us today because if you recall, both in caring culture, the caring, there he is, welcome. In both the review of the caring culture report, as well as updates to the SRNR, we talked a little bit about the diversion program and trying our goal of keeping our students out of the court system and really utilizing restorative justice and some of our other practices to make that happen. And so there were a couple of comments about how we really are reducing the number of students who are involved in the court system. And we thought we would put names with faces with their great work with the school system and see if you had any specific questions regarding diversion or regarding the court system and what we're doing with restorative justice. So we wanted them to be with us today. And so we open the floor in case you have any questions of Andy or Vicky.
Okay, we're gonna do a mini presentation, or we're gonna go right into analyzing the...
Then we have our other data that people have asked about before, so I just didn't know if anybody had any specific questions. I think Ms. Strauss does.
Okay, Ms. Strauss.
Right, 'cause this gets back to some of the questions that I had. So you have information from the court side, correct, on how the diversion is going? And the other question that I had had is it's my understanding that there has been a decline nationwide and within the county with regard to teenage misbehavior that would normally send them to court and actually be in JDC. So I guess my...
Okay, Ms. Strauss, hold on a second. Let me just ask a question. Would it be easier to do questions in context at the end after you do a presentation? Because what I wanna do is that if Ms. Strauss had other questions, or it's potential that questions that people are gonna ask now may be answered during the course of the presentation.
Okay.
So can you, would you mind parking lotting that question so that keeps us... Okay, you'll be first in line, don't worry.
Yeah.
You won't lose your place.
Yeah, yeah. And basically, as you recall, a week ago Thursday night, we did the main presentation, but we had some follow-up questions where people wanted additional data from that Thursday night session. And so that's what these slides are, so we'll go ahead and do that. And then if anybody else has any questions, we can answer those.
Yeah, just do the slides first, and then, and then we'll have them in context.
Great.
That'll be great.
All right, then we're gonna start with Dana.
There we go. Hello, how are you? I'm fine, thank you. I have a series of slides to present to you, trying to get at a question that Mr. Moon asked at the last school board meeting regarding whether we are seeing fewer expulsions in Fairfax County public schools because students are committing fewer offenses that might result in an expulsion, or whether we're seeing fewer expulsions primarily because we have changed the way we respond to those offenses. Before I get to that data, however, I did wanna show you this slide. It's a slide that was included in the annual report that you were issued, and it gives you the 10-year view of referrals to the hearings office coming from the schools. And what this will show is that in the last 10 years, we've had fully a 50% reduction in referrals to the hearings office, which is really outstanding, and it's a testament to all the hard work that's being done by the folks up here with prevention and intervention, and most certainly by the school folks, the administrators and the counselors and the psychologists and the teachers. So I didn't wanna let this day pass without you seeing that. The rest of the slides you're gonna see actually start with the 9-10 school year. So the changes don't look quite as dramatic, but when you pull it back four additional years, you get the, the big picture. Okay, to Mr. Moon's question, this was a graph that was provided to you in both the OPE report that was done about a month ago, and then again, Dr. Lipp provided it to you at the last school board meeting. And essentially, what this graph is showing is that in the last six years, we've had a 98% reduction in the number of students who have been expelled by Fairfax County public schools. As I explained to you that last Thursday, the bulk of that reduction is coming from the expulsion with services category. So when you look at this graph, the blue bars show what proportion of expulsions were expulsion with services. The red part of each bar shows the expulsion with no services. So 98% reduction overall and a 91% reduction in expulsions with services. Now, before I show you the other data, I wanted to point out that there are some limitations to this data in responding to Mr. Moon's question. First and foremost, when you look at hearings office data over the past six years, you're not necessarily comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. If you think of the SRNR, or one way to look at the SRNR, is it provides a bucket of offenses that must come to the hearings office. Over the past six years, that bucket has been shrinking. So when you look at the first bar on all of these graphs, which is the 09-10 school year, you're starting with a larger bucket. You're starting with a bucket that includes not only all of the offenses that must still come to the hearings office, but all of these additional offenses as well. As you move down the graph, that bucket has shrunk. Because these offenses over the years have stopped being mandatory referrals to the hearings office. That's not to say that they can't come to the hearings office. Some of them still do come to the hearings office, but they don't all come to the hearings office anymore. So that's one limitation of the data. Related to that is the idea, for example, if you look at possession of your own prescription medication at school. If you look at the 9-10 school year, which is gonna be the first bar, all of the students who brought their own prescription medication to school had to come through the hearings office. Beginning with the 11-12 school year, they no longer had to come to the hearings office. This data does not include the students who didn't come to the hearings office, so you do need to keep that in mind. This is only the students who came to the hearings office. To really get a sense of what's going on with prescription drugs in the school, we would have to combine the numbers on my graph with the numbers of students that were dealt with at the school level. That can be done, it's not impossible to do that, it's just it would've taken a lot longer than I could've done in the week that gets us here today. So this is gonna show you a six-year perspective of the number of referrals to the hearings office compared to the number of expulsions. And what you'll see is that over the last six years, there's definitely been a downward trend, not only in expulsions, but also in referrals. The expulsions have declined, as I said, by 98% over that time period. Referrals have declined by 30% over the same time period. So there is absolutely a reduction on both sides, the offenses that are coming to the hearings office, as well as how we're responding to those offenses. Now, when you dig in and look at offenses category by category, the picture is a bit more mixed, so the next series of slides will do that. This is the six-year perspective on weapons offenses coming to the hearings office. Again, you know, the overall trend is down. It's certainly not down in any linear way. It's up, it's down, it's up, it's down. But over the last six years, there's been a slight decrease in weapons offenses coming to the hearings office, keeping in mind, of course, that there have been categories of offenses that no longer must come to the hearings office, and those are printed below for you. This is also showing that there's been a significant increase, or decrease, excuse me, in the number of students expelled for a weapons violation. And in fact, last school year, no students were expelled from Fairfax County as the result of a weapons violation. Now, that doesn't mean that they didn't receive consequences. They received appropriate consequences, every one. If there was a sense that they presented a risk to other students or to staff members, then they were reassigned to one of our alternative programs where they would have the appropriate level of supervision. So I don't want to give the impression that they didn't receive consequences, they just weren't expelled. This is showing you all of the drug distribution cases that have been received over the past six years. This is about as close to an apples-to-apples comparison as you're gonna get, because what was a mandatory referral to the hearings office six years ago is still a mandatory referral to the hearings office. There have not been categories of offenses that have come out of this bucket, and what we're seeing is that over the last six years, these numbers are pretty flat. Again, they go up and down a little bit over time, but we haven't seen a big increase in the number of distribution offenses, but unfortunately, nor have we seen a large decrease. If you keep in mind, however, that that line is remaining pretty flat at the same time that the overall student population is growing, I think that is a positive. And I should point out as well, because I think this is important, when you go back to the 9-10 and the 10-11 school years in Fairfax County, then if you distributed drugs at school, chances are you were going to be expelled by the school board. The majority of those students were expelled. Of course, the vast majority expelled with services. That began to change in 11-12, and then last school year, we had no students expelled as a result of a drug distribution offense. And again, I want to emphasize, that doesn't mean that they didn't receive an appropriate consequence, they did, they just weren't expelled. These are your other drug offenses, which would essentially be any drug offense that came to the hearings office that was not a marijuana or controlled substance abuse offense. So this is going to be your drug possession, your drug use. In the first three years, there were some alcohol distribution offenses included in there as well, that dropped out of the bucket back in the 13-14 school year. So other than those few alcohol distribution offenses, this would be primarily prescription drugs and marijuana. Definitely, the overall trend is downward, and no students have been expelled for a drug possession or use offense since the 12-13 school year. These are your serious assaults and threats. Of course, the hearings office does not get every assault or every threat, but we do get the ones that the principals believe are very serious. Again, this, this is very similar to the weapons data in the sense that the progress has not been linear, it's up and it's down. And overall, it's kind of flat in the last six years. If you draw a line from 9-10 to 14-15, certainly, there has been a significant decrease in the number of students expelled for having engaged in these aggressive behaviors. Last year, two students were expelled, one of the two was a result of an assault, which is represented by the very, very thin red bar on the 14-15 school year.
Dana, are some of these crimes in the community...
No.
Not yet?
Okay. These are the crimes in the community, actually. So all, everything outside of this graph, it's all school-based behavior. This graph is showing you the criminal convictions that could result in an expulsion. Those numbers have always been very low, primarily, actually, because we tend to deal with those criminal, community-based offenses when we see them as charges. Once they've been convicted, the principals have the option to bring them back to the hearings office to look at an expulsion, but traditionally, the principals don't do that unless the student presents such a risk to others that that, perhaps, we need to look at a no, at a no services option. But essentially, I wanted to show you this data, because while it's very small in terms of total number of referrals to our office, it's a relatively large percentage of the actual expulsions that come down are for these community-based crimes. And that's just a testament to the fact that these students who have committed such aggressive and violent crimes in the community do present a risk to our other students regardless of what that setting is. So you do see a larger number of expulsions associated with these, and in fact, last school year, the other expulsion that we had represented, you can almost not see it, by the thin green line on the last bar, was an expulsion for no services as a result of a crime that occurred in the community. These are your other offenses. So this is everything that isn't drugs, weapons, assaults, threats, and crimes in the community. Essentially, this is gonna be your gang activity, it's gonna be bullyings, harassment, disrespect, defiance, theft, everything else. And here is where you really do see a sustained improvement. We're getting far fewer referrals than we used to get. Again, I think this is testament to the hard work that's going on in the schools and the capacity that's been built with the Sosa program and the RJ program to handle a lot of these other offenses at the school level instead of sending them on to the hearings office.
Again, in a further attempt to address Mr. Moon's question, we looked at the number of things that were reported to the Virginia Department of Education. They require, we have green sheets and yellow sheets, but basically, there are certain things, the most, weapons and assaults and things like that must be reported regardless of consequence. Then there's a list of other behaviors that are only reported if it results in a suspension. So again, back to the question of are we seeing more of these behaviors over the course of time, we're definitely seeing a decline in the number of incidents that have to be reported to the Virginia Department of Education, and again, within a context of increased population. So it was just a quick snapshot way of looking at it.
That, that, go back to that slide you don't meant for a moment. That's significant, because their standard has never changed. Although we're kinda moving the needle and trying to improve our practices, their standards have never changed. And going from a high of 9,510 to 7,195 is a significant change, all while we've grown significantly during that same period of time. So that's very significant.
Mrs. Schultz, could I ask a quick clarification question? Otherwise, you can remove me from... Thank you. Very quick. My very quick question on the...
We run late, I'm blaming you.
Okay, thank you, I'll be blamed. So, you know, all your, you showed the, a offenses that's been removed from mandatory reporting to the, you know, hearings offices. Are they still being reported under this to VDOE, all of those?
Yes.
Okay.
So whatever the criteria was in 2010-11 is still the same criteria for the Virginia Department of Education.
Yeah, because that's what I just heard from superintendent.
Right, yes. So the ones that the school had dealt with on their own, if they resulted in a suspension, but not the referral to the hearings office, they would still be in here, or if they were just on the listed of banned ones.
That was what I needed to hear. I mean, it's, it's, you know, seeing the numbers going down is, you know, give me a lot of comfort.
Okay, great.
The other piece is that we tried to look at CIS overall, and again, we've changed categories and definitions, but if you look overall in the last two years, we've had a 15% decline in total entries into CIS. And that's fairly consistent, then if you're looking at how many people are putting into the system anything that they deem appropriate to document and record. So there is that 15% reduction in that also.
Thank you. Now you can remove my name from your list.
You were quick. Then we go to Ms. Schultz's question about talking specifically about middle school students with disabilities and referrals that we have for that, and what specifically as a system we're doing to address appropriate behavior, appropriate strategies. So as with many things, we've got several aspects that we're looking at this from several different views of the lens. This last year, we updated for secondary students our strategies for success and have implemented a lot of additional curriculum review strategies, things that students can do to help them in terms of their own problem solving and decision-making. We're also reminded that many of our students with disabilities are on a continuum, we've got more involved students. These would be your CAT-B students who have significant autism, emotional disabilities, your intellectual disabilities, and that personal development class, depending on where they're coming to you from and where they're entering on the continuum. Again, we really work a lot on that in terms of behaviors. We've also done a lot of extensive training, the schools are asking us for additional behavioral support and training to help students specifically. So this is kind of a summary of the different types of trainings that we're offering, and especially on our strategic planning days, staffs are asking for a part of the day in the schools with their principal, and then part of the day for central training on the more involved behavioral support. Our PBIS programs in terms of working with students across all schools, and again, you can talk about students with or without disabilities, we really are looking at system-wide programs to offer expectations, consistency, routine, and support, as well as coming up with strategies on how to come up with positive strategies and positive expectations and work within schools. We also highlighted the extensive cultural response of implementation that's coming, as well as schools that have already done some work in this area. And then the final piece of that is for some of our more severe students, we have implemented surveys and functional behavioral assessments and behavioral intervention plans specifically for those students. So I'm gonna let...
Just real quickly, I looked over a three-year view of how many have been done for students with disabilities, and it's running between 600 and 650 without a really significant uptick. And we have been doing some extra training, hoping that people would utilize them more again as a prevention or, or a proactive strategy. So there has been a group working this school year on developing a more streamlined approach to the functional behavioral assessment, to make it a little bit more user-friendly, and there's training expected on that in the fall.
So again, for those really involved students between the FBA's and the BIP's, you can get at some very specific behavioral intervention plans, so we also wanted to highlight that. And then again, it depends on where the student's coming to us on the continuum and where they enter. But a lot of our IEP teams, especially our psychologists, our social workers, the local screening committees, our behavioral intervention teachers are part of that planning team to be able to both look at the data from the functional behavioral assessment, as well as help develop the behavioral intervention plan. Yeah. So those were the specific questions that we had from Thursday night, no, but some of the data we wanted to provide, so we, of course, wanted to answer any additional questions people had.
I have Ms. Strauss's promised, and then Ms. McLaughlin, and I don't have anybody else other than myself on the list. Oh, Mr. Moon, you're back on the list? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You said you were finished, I remember, that's on record.
Okay, sort of, big-picture questions. From the data that I have seen, and I do wanna get to the diversion program, I am assuming that sort of major criminal activities like heroin, crack, pills, meth, that's not occurring in our schools. Whatever we read in the newspaper, it's in the community, it's older, but we're not seeing it coming to school. In other words, that level of, of distribution or use is, is not on school grounds, so that's what I'm hoping the answer is, yes, that whatever's going on is in...
We're seeing very little of that.
That's what I wanted to know, yeah.
Any offense of that nature would have to come to the hearings office, so that I would know about that.
Right.
It's been several years since we've received a...
That's my understanding.
A case of heroin, for example. We do occasionally see some serious drugs, but it's a rarity.
That's right, so whatever that involvement, it's...
When I say serious, I mean the Schedule I's, I don't wanna...
Right, exactly.
You know, imply that our Schedule II drugs aren't serious, but you're, as you said, the, the crack, cocaine, the heroin.
Yeah.
Last year, we had an uptick in LSD cases, which are a Schedule I drug, but this year, we're not seeing that, so for some reason, last year appeared to be an outlier.
If I might add to that, in light of what we've heard from the county and the drug use that they're seeing in, across the county, and it's not unique to Fairfax, I think we're seeing it across the country, the fact that we've been able to keep it out of our schools to the extent we have, I think, is, is an important point.
Right, and that's my question, which is, which is wonderful. And our officer, you were gonna comment on the, 'cause you know what goes on, on the street, as well as in the schools.
I like to pretend I do, yes, no. What you see on the news, what you see in the papers, generally, what is going on out in the community. And oftentimes, it's not the youth that are in the schools, but those just beyond that age, and, you know, the heroin overdoses, they, they happen all the time, frankly, and they're usually older folks, you know, and I mean older by twenties and thirties and even forties and fifties, they're, they're all ranges. But fortunately, yes, we don't, we don't really see, and I see pretty much anything that comes across the radar that's serious, I see everything. Barely, you know, good stuff.
Good, alright, that's a good thing.
Yeah, it is good.
That's a good thing. Then my next question also is gang activity, jumping in, I mean, we, we don't, we don't see as much in school as we did years ago, so that again, is my question...
I would say that if you look to 10 or 12 years ago, we are in a much, much better place than we were 10 or 12 years ago, it's not even comparable. That's not to say that we, we don't have serious gang activity in the schools, we do see it. It tends to tick up and tick down, we tend to have flare-ups in a certain part of the county, and then that seems to come under control, and then it will flare up in another part of the county, but certainly, we're not seeing the kind of numbers we were seeing 10 years ago.
Great. And I'm sure sex trafficking, whatever, that's in the community, it's not in our schools, 'cause we work very, very hard to keep those contacts out of school.
Absolutely, and a lot of that's intelligence-driven anyway, so we try to keep it out of schools as much as we can, and, you know, and I think sometimes, anecdotally, that the message is, you know, if they're gonna do that stuff, they keep it out of the schools. They do it on their own time, you know, they don't, they don't do it in schools.
But we try very hard to keep people out of that, so that was, alright, so you are seeing, alright, this is good news.
We do work very hard on that, however, if the authorities come to school and notify us of those situations, we, of course, try to work with the families, offer them resources, and...
Right, our schools and our principals work very, very hard on that.
They do, they do, and have really helped a lot of students and families, especially in the last couple of years.
Okay, great.
We do have one person assigned to that specifically, so that's his expertise, so always available.
Thank you, alright.
Okay, alright, I have Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, and then Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you. I do want to echo everyone's, you know, real sense of encouragement, Dr. Garza, that we're looking at the continued improvement in the way we approach discipline in our schools, and I wanna thank everyone, staff who's here today to help speak to it. I think it really speaks well Fairfax County. But as my colleagues know, there seems to strangely be an area where we just aren't making the progress where we need to. And it's in an area that is well-supported by educational best practice and research, and so I wanted to have the conversation with you all today and invite Dr. Lipp to also speak to it, because both she... Because both she and I reached out to Arlington County Public Schools. And as some of you know, I've been talking about our Second Chance Program, which is for students who are caught for a first-time offense with marijuana possession, as well as in where my concern rests, which is use. And so I'm going to share with you my conversation with Assistant Superintendent in Arlington Public Schools, Cynthia Johnson, and then again, invite Dr. Lipp to add what she knows from her conversation. But Cynthia Johnson is an 18-year veteran principal in Arlington Public Schools before she took over Assistant Superintendent of their administrative programs and services. And she did clarify that yes, in fact, use is embedded within possession with their Second Chance Program. So if you're caught having used marijuana for the first time, it is the same, it is treated the same, and the access to their diversion program is the same, whether it was that you possessed at school or that you were caught having used it at school. She believes it's an outstanding program, that within the last three years, their data analysis demonstrated that 88% of the students, whether it's possession and/or use, do not repeat offend. So what you can see is that nine out of 10, they don't commit that future alcohol or drug infraction. She said, "We are in the business of helping kids be successful. This includes helping kids learn from their actions and make better decisions. As a diversion program, it enables students to become better educated and more aware of the perils of drug use. The purpose of this program is to help. Its intent is to help. It provides support to our families to get the outcomes that we seek, which is to reduce alcohol and drug use in our schools." So I really want to highlight this again because when I spoke to Dr. Lipp to try and understand why our school system has been so reluctant to follow the model of Arlington, to have both possession and use for a first-time offense being incorporated with our Second Chance Program review, the only information that I have been given is that our principals are uncomfortable, including use in this diversion access and opportunity. And if there's additional information for why not, I would like to understand. But I also think it's really important that we have the conversation about what the research says, what the best practice says, the fact that Arlington continues to be successful with this. The fact that if you look on, I believe it's slide three of the staff responses, fewer mandatory referrals. I got to tell you, it begs the question that under the influence of drugs, two times within 12 months, and that's still not a mandatory referral. So mob assault, not a mandatory referral. Possession of weapons like throwing stars, and I've actually seen one of those, these things are extremely sharp and dangerous. I really hope that we as a board, and again, I reached out to Dr. Lipp because I want to be able to partner with Dr. Garza's leadership on this. I want to very much understand what is holding us back. And Ms. Evans can speak to this more than anyone around this board table. Parent notification was an uncomfortable thing for our principals. That was not something that they, you know, really felt comfortable around. So I respect our principals not being comfortable with including use for a first-time offense, but this isn't about what's comfortable or uncomfortable. It's about best practice. And when you've got an 18-year principal out of Arlington who's now leading this program and believes in it and believes this is the right thing to do, it follows criminal law. There's no distinction of possession and use in criminal law. It's you possess it or you distribute it. And we treat distribution of alcohol and inhalants more leniently in terms of the mandatory referral than we do for a student who has used for the first time. So I would really hope that.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, I need you to get, we're trying to get back on, and we're running out of time. So I've got a lot of people on line.
Yes, that's fine. So I would like to invite Dr. Lipp to add anything to what my conversation had been with Arlington's Assistant Superintendent.
I think you summarized the data correctly. We were looking at, speaking with them about their program. And what you summarized is what they had to say in terms of their four-year program.
And I would also add to that, if I may. Our principals, I have to, I give our principals a lot of credit, and I look at people at the end of the table because all of you as well worked with the principal committee we put together that first year I was here. And we really spent almost a year developing the recommendations that we brought to you all. And I think we're, I think we've, you know, I think obviously the changes that were made are making a significant difference. This is a success story, what we're talking about today. I will tell you that when we had some pretty lively discussions around the difference between possession and use. So I want to just describe their perspective on how they see that, okay? And they're the people we hold responsible for keeping our schools safe. And I respect what Arlington is doing. We certainly have studied school systems all across the country on this issue and other places as well. And we want to learn from other people. But the way we see it, and I actually agree with our principals on this, there's clearly a difference between having something in your pocket or in your backpack versus going into the restroom and using it on school premises. And that's the distinction that our principals made, and that is it's more overt, more blatant, if you're going to actually use it on premises. And so they were concerned about students being able to smell marijuana in the schools. You know, we want to prevent that where we can. So I mean, I respect what Ms. McLaughlin is trying to accomplish here. I think it's certainly worthy of a conversation for the board to have. But I do want to add to the perspective of our school-based administrators and why those many conversations that we had, that's the viewpoint I think we also have to appreciate as well.
And if I can just clarify, the students who use marijuana do come to the three-day seminar. They are not excluded from the three-day seminar.
That's not the point, Dr. Panarelli. The point is that they are required to have to go to the hearings office, and they are at risk of being involuntarily transferred. If you were in Arlington, you would have the same access, whether it's possession or use, and it has certainly been successful, and it certainly is less traumatizing to the students.
I think the point is, is that the Arlington program has an 88% non-recidivism rate, and it's both for possession and use. We got that, Ms. McLaughlin. Okay, I need to move along. I have Mr. Moon, then Ms. Corbett Sanders, then Ms. Evans, then Mr. Wilson, then Ms. Hines, then me. So, no, no. After Mr. Moon is Ms. Darnatt Kofax.
I think I sent in this question to Dr. Lipp. Sorry that it wasn't until yesterday, regarding what's on page 16 of S R N R, has to do with the property violations. It's a P1. When you look at what's on the bull dock, that's page 21. You're not recommending any changes, but just thought, a question occurred to me about this particular provision about theft of another person's property while money by the use of force or fear. Normally, I consider that to be a robbery in common law sense. Is a using force or fear to take somebody's property while money? And principal could treat that as lenient as not doing anything? Is that?
You're right that that is a robbery. And it has never been, robbery has never been a mandatory referral to the Division Superintendent, primarily because when you think of a K-12 school context, what that could look like in an elementary school is very different from what it could look like in a high school. So if you have a second-grade student bullying another second-grade student and taking his snack, that would be a robbery. If you have a high school student who assaults another student and steals the watch off of his wrist, that's a robbery. So what the document does is it gives that high school principal the discretion to say, this is beyond the pale. This is coming to the hearings office. I have the discretion to do that, while also giving.
So as a board member, as a board member, I don't really, in practical sense, have to worry about high school or middle school principals condoning or not doing anything in a situation where a bully using the force, taking somebody's calculator or cellphone away from another student.
Well, it is a discretionary consequence, but you know, if we trust our principals to look at these individually and say, you know, this was really bad. I'm going to recommend that you be transferred to an alternative setting. You need more supervision, as opposed to a principal looking at it and saying, maybe this warrants a five-day suspension, or a one-day suspension, or an RJ, or and we're trusting our principals to make those decisions. And it's, this is a category offense that has always been at the discretion of the principals.
So if the victim's family disagrees with the principal's disposition of the case, handling of the case, they could report that to police, and if a police filed a charge, there would be different consequences for the.
Well, the parent could pursue robbery charges for sure. I think that if a parent were pursuing robbery charges, first of all, the principal knows that upfront because of the relationship with the SRO. I would be shocked if, well, I would be shocked if we had a principal with a situation where a child was robbed at school, the parents are pursuing robbery charges, and the student didn't come to the hearings office. The principal wouldn't have to, but I would be surprised if the student didn't come. I would also say this is a very, at least the serious cases, it also is a very rare offense. We might see maybe two to three robberies a year that come to the hearings office. If it was serious, I'm very confident the principals would call and seek guidance.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So Ms. Darnatt Kofax, then Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders, then Ms. Evans.
I thank you all for this, you know, mostly good news report. I mean, some of the amazing changes we've seen in referrals to the hearing office, as well as the 98% reduction in expulsion, it's such good news. And it's a whole system-wide change, and I really, really do appreciate that. So thank you all who've worked hard to help our students, you know, help themselves in a way to be more successful and learn from their mistakes. So thank you. Commander Weyland, the one question I have for you is when you do see gang activity in an uptick, how exactly does your, do the police work with our schools to ensure that the community feels safe, to ensure that the community is informed, and also to, you know, nip it in the bud?
First of all, it's always Andy, please. The, for example, West Potomac, recent, most recent easy example to point out, not long after that occurred, Sean Martin, the captain down there, had a big meeting. It was bus-related. So we had people from transportation, Mr. Stork, who's now the supervisor down there, shit, was there. Us, we were there, gang unit was there, and it was a lot, and Principal of West Potomac, what's his name? Alex, yeah. Case was there. So everything comes together. We talk about what the problem was, what the gang unit has kind of inferred from what they've talked to. The kids talk. These gang kids, they talk. They're proud of what they do, some of them. So they talk. So there's lots of good information to be gathered and given. And then, you know, we take that to the school, to Mr. Stork, and then through all those different means, the information gets out that, yeah, we're on it. There's a presence, a police presence that's increased noticeably, quite noticeably in this case. A plan is developed to keep an eye on the buses, what could we do in the future. I don't think our public information almost puts out much on it in terms of, I think they did that night perhaps, but it kind of flares down. But the information is more, I don't want to say grassroots, but it's through the school community, through the kid messages and that kind of thing. The police are on it, we're working it. We've got arrests, and I believe that resulted in 12 arrests. Where that's going to go, I don't know. But still, that sends a message. We're on it, and we're on it quick, and that's how we clamp down on it. We don't waste time trying to figure out really what happened. We try to figure out how to stop it from happening again quickly, and then we get to the root of it through that. And that's what we did in this case. And that's a great example of how we do it when it happens. Unfortunately, those types of flare-ups, I think this year, that might have been the first real significant incident. So yeah, that's what we do.
Well, thank you for highlighting that. The one thing that I, well, I found missing in that though was when you reach out to the Board of Supervisors, and we can talk about this offline perhaps, but it's also important that you reach out to our board because we're not always aware of that. And sometimes when we get the messaging from the principals, that's fine, but what if we get it from the community? And it makes, it makes for an uncomfortable.
I agree with you 100%. And having, at one time, not too long ago, I had one of the worst jobs in the world. And that was the director, I was the acting director of our Public Information Office. And Dr. Garza may know, because everything comes at you all day, all the time. And I'm like the gatekeep, so I know. And I've had my own struggles with that office in particular, not getting stuff to me, through me, and to John and to Matt upstairs so that you all get it. It kind of frustrates me, and I have no bones about telling you that. But there's some miscommunications that happen, some disconnects. I apologize for it, but I'm trying, I've been trying hard to make that better because I've tried to pretty much say, and this is just not gang stuff, I'll tell you all now, that if it involves the schools in any way, shape or form, I need to at least know about it so that I can let John and Matt know about it, so that in turn, everybody here can know about it, just to have an awareness of it because there ain't nothing you can do about it. But at least you know what's going on, we're on it, and there's stuff happening. So yeah, that's not lost on me.
Yeah. Well, and because, and as I said, that particular instance was one where that communication broke down. But I appreciate the hard work that you do. I also, in another life, worked in communications. And I know being that point person to fan out the information and get it out is a difficult one. But you know, I'm hopeful that we'll work through that and.
I think so. And we're having a new director. There's a whole change up there. That whole office is really completely changed and will be changed, a new director, hopefully be announced in the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping. And that person's number two is new. And so I think a lot of change. And I'll meet with them anyway. John and I and Matt will try to get a meeting. We'll try to make it work.
We appreciate that, and we appreciate your work with our schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
So I will echo what Ms. Darnatt Kofax has just said on a couple of points. One, we are very appreciative of all the hard work and the progress that has been made. But the concerns over the gang situation and the reporting was a failure. Because I would suggest that at the same time, that communication with the supervisors, we should have, the two school board members who represent those students directly and represent that school should have at least had a heads up. I was actually, heard about it from about four other people before I heard about it from anybody else, and those were all.
As opposed to a failure, I think what you meant was could have been done better?
Yes, okay. Could have been done better.
I'm just making sure I understood.
Yes. Yes, you've got it. I apologize for my deliberate language. But I also have a couple of questions that are related to that, which, first, how did we decide to take some of this stuff off of the mandatory referral list? Because I'm a little stunned that some of these things are pretty aggressive. And why are they off the list, such as mob assault? None, you know, some of the weapons, that they are not mandatory. That's a bit disconcerting to me.
That's probably a more detailed question than we can do right here, Ms. Corbett Sanders, because that goes back for historical times.
Okay. I'm just, I'm out of curiosity, because these are pretty big things to come off a list.
I'm happy to answer it. It won't take me very long at all. I can roll right down for you. Possession of razor blades, that was actually a court decision. Back at the time of this court decision, the statutory weapons law in the Code of Virginia included razors. And the Supreme Court of Virginia decided that a razor blade was not a razor as defined in criminal code. So that came off because of a court decision. Possession of your own prescription medication with no intent to distribute or misuse, school board decision. Mob assault, that was also a school board decision. And that's again, because I think if you look at a K-12 context and what a mob assault, and I don't in any way want to suggest that mob assaults aren't serious, but what they can look at, look like when it's sixth and seventh graders compared to what they can look like when it's high school students, or if it's. look like when it's high school students, or if it's two in the mob compared to five in the mob, it just gives the principals the discretion to handle it in the way that they think it is appropriate. We certainly still get mob assaults. Do we get every single one? I'm sure that we don't. Do we get the serious ones? I'm confident that we do.
Okay. Um, and then along, just a little, couple more, um, questions. One is regarding the, uh, the gang activity. Um, I know that, and you all immediately triaged, um, and there was some progress there, but I'm actually more concerned about what we are doing in the aftermath, to reach out to, um, the affected communities and educating parents and people in the community as a grassroots effort to be alert, be aware, what do we need to do to, um, to change these patterns? And so, I would urge that we have a broader community, a broader discussion about that, probably not today, because I'm cognizant of Mrs. Schultz's time. Um, and then another area where you can certainly come back to me, if you like, is on the linkage, I'm wondering if there's a linkage of the results of our student surveys in some areas, in particular drug and alcohol use, and that if we see an outlier on those surveys where a particular school may have a higher representation of use of drugs or alcohol in the past 30 days, um, do we do something as a, um, from your offices to try to help those schools?
Yes, that data is shared with the principals, it's shared with the student leadership, and together we plan a variety of prevention activities at targeted schools for targeted.
And so what's that threshold for the intervention?
Uh, we usually are just looking at, um, higher than the county average rates.
Okay.
But I would also say that we've done a lot more work in the past two years, especially across pyramids. Schools used to look at their data individually, and now we're really looking at it more high school, middle school, elementary, the whole period.
Yeah, that's so important, because if we can, through education early on, ideally we avoid the challenges as we go further up. Thank you.
One last thing I want to say is, I want to give a shout out also to facilities and to our safety and security offices. Um, having been a building administrator, if you come back to school on Monday morning and see any type of graffiti or anything else, immediately it's removed from your facility. And that's really great work by our, our departments to make sure our buildings are clean and safe and positive. So, I do, since I saw Tom in the back, I wanted to mention that.
He will. Okay, Ms. Evans?
Thank you. I, I, I think that, uh, one thing that comes through loud and clear is just how far we have come on student discipline in, uh, the last five or six years. So, congratulations to everybody who did all the hard work, uh, that was required to get us to, to where we are now. Um, I wanted to thank Ms. McLaughlin for raising the second chance program and the issue of use. It's, um, you know, we've had, we have discussions on this, we, we have discussions, and personally, I don't know how I'm going to come out on this one yet. Um, I need to, to be thoughtful about it, but I do think that there's a lack of clarity now in the SRNR, and I think we do need to, to be clear on, um, the issue of use, and, uh, whether use is treated the same way possession is, or if use is treated the same way, uh, the distribution is. So, I do think that we need to, to have that discussion. Um, I, I do feel strongly, we need to, we, we really need to be working on reducing marijuana use. We, we have to do that. Right now, more students, according to the youth survey, smoke marijuana than smoke tobacco. You know, we've made huge inroads on tobacco use, that's great. You know, we need to make more inroads into marijuana use. So, um, I, you know, if there's an amendment coming, I, I hope we'll see it, uh, the language of it soon, and I would welcome any, uh, particular research on this that would, would help inform the board. So, thank you for raising it, I do think we need clarity on that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Evans, Mr. Wilson, and then Ms. Hines.
Yeah, thank you, um, and, uh, I echo some of the folks that have commented on, on the, the numbers that appear to show us, Dr. Garza said a huge success story. My questions are really, um, fairly straightforward. Uh, this, this past year, we've heard, uh, on a number of occasions that there have been schools closed because of bomb threats, and I was wondering, how have you seen that statistic change in the last few years, and does that get reflected in any of this data?
Yeah, I don't actually have numbers on the bomb threats. I can, I'm sure I could find them. Uh, I think historically, they're probably similar year to year. Now, in terms of evacuations, that's always the principal's decision, you know, that's, uh, we, we vet them as quickly as we can, as we can, as soon as we can. Unfortunately, they're generally nonsense, it's just somebody usually overseas, having fun, and in their minds, it's fun to do this, to cause us to react. Uh, in terms of numbers though, I couldn't give you that.
Okay.
I will tell you, Mr. Wilson, they do tend to be groupings of them, sadly. Um, we'll go months and months and months, you know, never have a bomb threat, and then you'll have one, and for some reason, it, it triggers copycats, um, or sometimes I feel like there's just one individual that has made it a, a point to, to disrupt our schools.
We were quiet, we had a, like, two or three weeks, just, it just went crazy, and that's exactly.
Yes, sir, so I think they do tend to either uptick or, or downtick.
It's, it's more of a, a school safety issue than really a, the discipline, uh, question that you're, that you've talked about. I just, I didn't, I think that in the community, some folks hear that, and they, they don't assume that it's just, you know, a copycat or a kid, you know, in somewhere else, you know, deciding they're going to prank, uh, the Fairfax County Public Schools, and it's good to hear that that's what you're finding, that when you look into them, you're not finding that actually somebody had intent.
We've, we've never had a situation, since I've been here, that any of them were legitimate,
um, you know, legitimate, um, threats.
Yeah, with credibility.
Yeah, none of them were credible threats. And we try real hard, Mr. Wilson, because I think this is an important question, to make sure our parents get information right away through our kit system, uh, so they know that we're, you know, evaluating, we're taking them seriously, but we've, you know, what our findings were.
And then, then, these are also, uh, questions maybe best answered by the officer. Um, do you believe that, that over the last five years, that, that students, uh, fewer students are engaging in inappropriate or illegal, uh, behavior?
Hard question for you to answer, because that would, five years, hundreds of thousands of students over the course of five years, from what I've seen, and my kids are in the schools in the Region Five, um, I think it's probably gotten better overall, at least in my one year here. I haven't seen anything, it was always something that makes you shake your head, but I haven't seen anything that's, anywhere, obviously, but I haven't seen anything horrifying, I haven't heard anything from any of the people sitting with me where, where there's a steady decline, increase in anything. As, as, as the numbers bear out, it seems to be a, a decline. Anecdotally, I couldn't, you know, I, I know certain districts more than others, so I wouldn't be able to say specifically.
Yeah, so along those same lines, I mean, do we, do we believe that drug use is declining amongst the high school students? Do we believe that gang participation is, is declining in actual numbers? Um, uh, these are the kind of questions that I have when I hear this. It's, it, I mean, I think that the, what we're doing in terms of the discipline process makes a lot of sense to me, but I would like to see sort of, is there an efficacy in terms of, you know, ultimately, when we're graduating kids into the community, are we doing better at, at, at having kids that are, uh, have a less incidence of drug use, you know, as they enter into the workforce?
The only thing we have that sort of gives us an insight into that, um, is the youth survey, and on the youth survey, we certainly have seen increasing use of marijuana. Um, gang activity has been always low and continues to be very low, pretty constant, um, in terms of what the kids are reporting themselves. Um, you know, I think it's marijuana is the biggest uptick, I don't know about drug use in general, but marijuana has definitely been an uptick, and I think, again, you have surrounding jurisdictions that are legalizing, there's a lot of conversation going on, you have kids whose parents are not necessarily, what we see is if the parents are saying, no, you shouldn't do this, kids are very unlikely to do it. If the kids are not saying that they are hearing from their parents, that it's just something that they're going to take a stand on, then it has an impact.
Yeah, and I, and I guess because, again, anecdotally, if you, if you're just sort of reading the newspapers, you know, there, there's a constant drumbeat of the discussion about the epidemic of opioid use in the community, and, and, you know, development of, of, of marijuana-related drugs with higher THC concentrations, and, and, I mean, that, the damage that, you know, uh, of a child that gets addicted to a, a drug has on their family and their life is just so dramatic. So, that, that, I would love to be able to say definitively that, you know, we are getting at that problem at the core level, um, in terms of making a dent in terms of the amount of usage by children.
I was at the, um, town hall the other day on the opo- opioids, and have, um, connected with a couple additional organizations that we may be able to weave into our prevention activities. I mean, I think that the kids, again, even with marijuana, I think that, that they've learned not to do it at school. Beyond the windows of school, it's, I, it's increasing as far as we can tell.
All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, I have, uh, Ms. Hines and Mr. Press.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, my, my point is actually about the, um, second chance program for use at school, and I also want to thank Ms. McLaughlin for bringing that, I hope, uh, bringing it to the board, um, because I, I do, I, what I hear staff saying is that you, you are, you need that direction from the board to change to a different way of approaching it, right? We don't, uh, right now, we treat possession as, no, use at school, um, as different from possession at school. And, yeah, and I, I, I get that, and, um, I, so I would say that, um, I, I also think they're different, and one of the things, I also am not sure where I stand on it, um, but I, one of the things that I want to be careful about, and I know that Ms. McLaughlin did not intend this, but I don't think of it as a question of making our principals comfortable, that's the only word that kind of worried me a little bit. I don't think it's that they're uncomfortable, because honestly, I think being a high school principal is probably uncomfortable 24/7, right? Um, but I think, um, it's more, you know, they are on the front line trying to balance what's best for this one student, um, and what's best for the community of the school itself. And that is what this bigger community expects of us as well. So, um, so I, 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 I take the desire seriously, but I look at it more as that, from that lens, I guess.
Mr. Press?
Thank you. Um, I want to commend staff on, you know, once again, outlining, um, you know, some of the challenges we faced in, in discipline issues. I think something that was interesting to me, you know, being in the system for 12 years, what I've seen grow, uh, in my experience, has been the awareness and outlining of expectations around discipline, uh, and offenses in school. Um, I can say that, for example, um, outlining the expectations about what constitutes a mob assault, and how that will be disciplined, and informing students about that could be a big contributor, and I, you know, in my, my hypothesis would be that, is that it is a contributor, to why we might have seen a reduction. So, my point in saying that is, by outlining expectations and letting students know what the potential consequences could be, and what is an offense on school grounds, um, we can contribute to a decline, uh, in those offenses. I think that these resources, uh, you know, the handbook, I know that a lot of students do actually go home and, and read these. Um, I, you know, having these two pagers for the, for the younger kids, I think holds a lot of benefit. I know the videos that staff produces to show students what, you know, some of the more common, uh, themes are in, in, you know, in discipline, and how we can, how we address those, and, and, you know, what, what the awareness is there is really effective. So, uh, my first question to you is, how are we maintaining and improving that program as we see a changing climate in our school as to what the offenses might be? An example that I know Ms. Schultz and I speak frequently about is the opioid use. Um, how are we, you know, in the face of that new challenge, outlining expectations around what that might, you know, how we can build awareness in our schools?
We're working right now on the script for the new video, um, and haven't finalized it, so that is certainly something that we could add. The, the, the reason I wanted to bring the booklet itself and the two things that we give to kids is because there had been some questions about, um, tone and, and different things, and I wanted to clarify that the SRNR itself is a legal document with a lot of legal language in it, but the, what the parents receive has a lot of introductory, um, information. So, you know, around the opioid use, I think that we are definitely planning to put more information in, in our prevention programming around that, but we can certainly look at the materials that you have and see whether there's something that could be added to the older kids' program.
Yeah, you know, I guess my comment on that would be, is just never underestimate the power of awareness. If a student knows that it's going to be something that is not allowed at school, and we outline that expectation, I think that, that message will really be taken to heart. Uh, my second question.
I think so too. One more thing, Mr. Press, as you know, in working with Liz Payne and the health staff, we coordinate a lot with them, so that it's multiple opportunities to be talking about this. It's during the beginning of the year, SRNR expectations, it's during health class, it's really a school-wide effort, the work with the student leaders, our messaging.
Right. I think the youth survey is a big key there, and, and any way we can incorporate that into targeted approaches at the campus level about what the specific risk factors are there, uh, the more effective that that will be. My second question is, uh, you know, we had a discussion earlier to Mr. Corbett Sanders' point about these mandatory referrals, and, you know, I could be wrong here, but what I was thinking through this was, for all of these offenses, what we may have been trying to ensure was equity in reporting, that, you know, if these things are occurring, that they're going to be reported, so we can have an equitable treatment of these cases. Um, in the absence of these mandatory referrals for these, and some of these are very serious offenses, um, or can be, how are we ensuring that equity in reporting from the school, you know, to VDOE or to the, to the hearings office, et cetera?
So, um, there is a process between IT and the schools that looks through all of the things that are entered into CIS, and sometimes you need to do some cleanup, because, um, it just doesn't make sense what is in there, and you go back and say, this must have been the wrong code, whatever. The report to VDOE is done by IT, so it's not done by individual schools, it's collectively done after a cleaning process, if you will, of the data. Um, beyond that, uh, you know, again, it is part of our process now that we meet with all of the principals at the beginning of the year and go through all of the pieces of the SRNR that we, anything, especially if we feel like there's been inconsistency from school to school. So, those are just the practices we're doing.
Now, we're down to me. So, um, I'm going to try to be specific in some of my questions. Can we go to slide 11, please? So, is there a, and I don't know who can answer this question, and if it's a legal question from a, from a law enforcement, or if it's from a VDOE policy, is the requirement to report these, is there a degree of specificity enough that from jurisdiction to jurisdiction around the Commonwealth, the same things for the same level are being reported, so we are comparing apples to apples?
To the extent that any data is clean, yes. So, in other words, it's very clear what needs to be reported, um, and each of those things are defined as, as what needs to be reported. Where our IT would say things sometimes get a little difficult, is that we may, in Fairfax County, have two or three offenses that need to be rolled together to meet the state definition, because for whatever reasons, we've divided it out more specifically in our SRNR. So, it could be that one, a student commits, like, you know, something, and in that series of something, there's the one thing that has to be reported to VDOE, so it all gets reported?
It gets reported as one incident.
Okay, okay. And Commander, do you have discussions with peers? Is there a way to have discussions with peers across the Commonwealth? Is there ever any, like, cross jurisdictional?
Not as often as you might think between us. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I rarely, in my career, and I don't know, other than the chief level and those highest levels, they don't, we don't at our level do too much with other, yeah, we don't. We have classes where they might engage, there's a police executive leadership school that takes place in Richmond, I think there's one in Roanoke, where people at my level or above, you know, commander level go and they'll have a week for three months, one week each month, but they, they talk about all kinds of stuff. But is there any specific forums? I'm sure there are, through, whether it's the Association of Chief of Police or other stuff, but I've never been a part of one, so I don't know.
The reason I ask is, is for slide, if we can see slide 14, it dovetails into my next question. So, on the right-hand column are those who are trained. Are these people who volunteer to train? Do we define who has to be trained? Um, is this, is there, um, a spread across the? Is this, is there a spread across the division? Are there pockets of training, you know, Dr. Garza, in terms of, you know, pockets of excellence? You know, is this predominantly middle school? I mean, who, who, who represents those numbers and how or why?
It's a combination. What we try to do is put out the charts for principals, so whether you're elementary, middle, or high school, no matter what you teach, if you teach CAT A, if you teach CAT B students, students with or without disabilities, we list all the recommended trainings and then work with the principals through our associations about what's required, what's not. I will tell you, in the last two years, we've made a lot of progress in sending IAs and PHAs and PHTAs to training, which is free training.
But do we track, do we track, like, the, the distribution of these people being trained across the division? Like, do we, are we able to determine, look, there's people in a building, and there's more people trained in this building, and not, versus the incidents that happen in the building, to see if there is a correlation between the professional development we're offering, the professional development people are taking advantage of, and having a concentration in a building, and whether it's actually resulting in something? I mean, and Ms. Corbett Sanders would appreciate, you know, what I'm trying to get to, which is, are we offering the professional development that they need? Are they taking advantage of it? And is it at a building level making a difference? And are we able to say, well, there's not enough people in this building being trained, and we're seeing the product of it, so we need more people in this building trained?
That's a good question. The, we've put into effect recently, and I would say a work in progress over the last two years, of two things. One is my PLT, which has been with us for a while, where you personally record everything because that helps you with your recertification. So every five years, when you recertify, it's a nice list under each category of how you're going to qualify to recertify. But we've also been sharing more attendance lists because we're able to list per section everybody who attends, and those go to the regions, and those go to the schools. So there is that way to check.
So I think, Ms. Schultz is on to something in terms of something we've talked about a lot, and that is making very explicit what we expect school-based staff to get trained in. So in some cases, it's specific maybe to a special program, you know, that you're seeing here, but for an example, restorative justice, I think we could easily connect the dots like you just described. We've done a lot of training, we have intentionally made sure we have people trained at every secondary school, and we're still building that program. And then we've subsequently seen a significant increase in restorative justice being used, right? So I get, I get your point, and I think moving forward, we need to be make, be able to connect those dots in the way in which you described-
That's exactly, that's exactly what I'm talking about. Okay, just a couple of-
One more thing, Ms. Schultz, our angel of autism, for instance, Tina Wilkerson, you, you heard me refer to that before, and that's an editorial statement, but most of the county would agree with me in that opinion. We're also asking program specialists to work with the principals to make sure that people have the right training for the right students that they serve.
And I do think that that's important, particularly with the proclivity for students with disabilities to wind up in the, in the discipline system. So just a couple of last things. One, I do recall asking, when you said that this is everything we asked for, I remember asking for a disaggregation between male and female, and secondary schools to non-secondary schools, and I didn't see any of that. So I'm going to put that up as a follow-on. I will say that I think the level of interest that's shown here necessitated this work session. I do have a question for, well, I have a point to make from Ms. Hines, and the question about uncomfortableness for principals. I did a lot of work with Mr. Paris as he was transitioning and doing this work for Dr. Garza when she came on board, and that is precisely what he, how he characterized it. He said that the principals were uncomfortable with the notion of use. And I mean, that, that was very clear, that it was a question of comfort. And I do think that Ms. McLaughlin has a point around, just because we've always done it this way, doesn't mean we need to keep doing it this way. And, and the reason I bring that up, and Dr. Garza, this is for you, is the question of, you know, are we treating possession and use differently, which we are? Is Arlington doing it? No. Is it required by law? No. And when you get down to statutory weapon, we treat possession and use of a statutory weapon, you know, it's, it's called out that way in our SRNR. We link them together, possession and use of a statutory weapon. So whether it's possession or it's use, you know, is linked together. And so I do think that there is enough evidence, when you talk about nearly a 90% non-recidivism rate in a neighboring jurisdiction, that reduces cost to us. And that's where, I mean, again, you know, in some respect, we've got to get to monetizing this. It saves us money. It saves the public money when you keep kids out of the pipeline to prison, if you will, and keep them on an academic path that keeps their trajectory towards graduation, reduces their involvement in the hearings office and in the discipline process, keeps them in class, keeps them academically inclined. So I, I do think that we've got to have this discussion if it's, if it, if it's warranted, you know, beyond this, if we need to, if, if some people are still at a comfort level, that's okay. I'm okay with that. But we're not talking about, this is not an emotional decision, this is a data-driven decision, and I think there is substantive enough data from not only the health and mental wellbeing of the students, but also from a monetary aspect of, you know what? This keeps them on the right path and produces, you know, effective citizens in our community at a greater level than, than those who recidivate. So I don't, I didn't hear any other next steps other than my own. I do have two quick go-bangs. We are already 12 minutes over for this amount. I would like to, in four minutes, be at a hard stop, mostly to respect people's time who have come to join us for this work session. So quickly, Ms. McLaughlin, and then Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders.
So, as Dr. Lipp knows, I really am trying to find a path to yes, that gets everybody on the same page. And so, Dr. Garza, I, I did want to share with not only my colleagues, but for you, that I, being the daughter of a former teacher and assistant principal, I know how important it is that we empower and demonstrate our confidence in their leadership. We currently give confidence and, and leadership discretion on mob assault, sex assault, and distribution of alcohol and inhalants. So I, I hope that any amendment I might consider will continue to have that reinforcement and reassurance to our principals that we respect their discretion. The beauty of Fairfax County's program, it's actually far more structured and have safety measures in place than maybe Arlington's, although Arlington's, we've shown, is very successful, is our program is required to go to an expedited review. So for my colleagues where you might be just trying to get yourselves comfortable with this, and I don't know else how to say it, because 90%, you know, success and not, non-recidivism is, is really good. But Dr. Garza, the, the only change here would be that your division would still have the expedited review decision-making. If, if a use case came to the division and it was determined that, you know what, there's other extenuating circumstances, we still want this to go to the hearings office, the opportunity's there. What I'm asking you all to consider is that first use, along with possession, still gets the expedited review option, which is what's been going on with the division council. But as much as everybody keeps talking about what research evidence and everything that is kind of, I feel, on the onus of me to bring to the table, I think it is just as important to say, all right, I've brought you the success of Arlington, and I will be happy to bring criminal justice experts to the conversation before we vote on any possible amendments. But let's remember, the same onus is on where is the evidence that what we're doing now is supposedly better for our kids? And to Ms. Hines' point, thank you for capturing it, and I want to clarify, you and I are very much on the same page. This is as much about what is best for the individual student as what will be best for our student body. And, you know, Ms. Schultz is, is correct that what we do here is to benefit each and every student in whatever situation they find themselves, and trying to get them to help them make better decisions is what this is all about.
Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I'm sorry I left the room, but just wanted to come back to a discussion that I had raised before about the student rights and concerns when they feel that something is not being addressed. I appreciate you pointing, having this handout, but if we read the handout, and it doesn't really address it in the elementary, but it does address it in the middle and high, it says, "You have a right to ask questions and to complain if you believe a decision made by staff members is not in your best interest." But sometimes it may not be a decision made, but an action taken by a staff member that is not in a student's best interest. And so I would suggest that you might want to modify that to read decision or action. And then I went back and I read your append, the reference there, which is Appendix D, page eight, and I'm a little concerned that it really doesn't necessarily give the same level of specificity of what people can expect from when a complaint is made regarding a decision or action, action or inaction of a staff member, that, you know, it does say the principal may require the parent. It says that the principal shall notify in writing on some cases, but we're not really specific in what parents can expect when they have a challenge. And this is a concern that somebody had brought to me, actually, two different parents had, that we're not as clear about that process as we are clear about the process when a child has done something and gotten in a bit of trouble.
And I guess my question would be, are you talking about when they disagree with something that's been done within the discipline system?
No. When something occurs to a child where maybe they themselves have experienced either some bullying or harassment, or a situation where, you know-
Pardon me?
When they're the victim.
And, and we have a very clear process for that, it's just not in the SRNR, so I-
So, but when parents go looking for it, they don't know where to look for that process. And so that's where, if it's not here, because the immediate thought is student rights. So if they have a right to raise an issue because they feel like they're a victim, then we need to point to what their right is and how they go about getting it resolved.
Okay. It, it may belong in the front of the book, I'm not sure it belongs within the regulation about discipline, but we can certainly-
Yeah, because most people when they-
I think what you mean is pointing them to the pla, you know, I think just at the beginning, if we can add some statements about pointing them to, to where they would go to know how to respond to those. Is that what you're saying, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Correct, because what it says here is, "You have a right to complain," and it points me to Appendix D, page eight, and it doesn't point me to resolving a situation if my child feels like they're a victim of something.
Again, I think when that was written, it was written within the discipline context. How do you complain?
Yeah.
And so, so, but the front of the book includes many other things that are not specific to the discipline process, so we can certainly put more information in there.
That would be very helpful, just because it kind of balances out that it's rights and responsibilities.
Do we have next steps? Okay. And that was just a, that was actually a leftover from the Thursday.
And which one matter?
Secondary schools, to, mm-hmm, to just see if there's a difference.
Also by elementary-
Well, the sec, the secondary model to the non-secondary model.
To the comprehensive high school model, right? Secondary at your three sites versus the other schools.
Whatever language you'll understand.
Okay.
It's not for me, it's for you.
That's good, okay.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Mine.
Which is?
Which is include language. The process and expectation is student.
Okay, she's, she's going to come over and tell you in person, because we know what that is, yes.
Specifically for the disaggregated data that you want, do you want suspensions? What, what data is it you want disaggregated?
I, I think that it's just a top-level view of, look at, look at what the discipline numbers are in a secondary scenario versus middle school, too, because I'm trying to get back down to the seventh to 10th grade. Seventh to 10th grade, seventh to 10th grade boys, seventh to 10th grade boys who are minorities, seventh to 10th grade boys who are, who have disabilities.
Ms. Schultz, I think about, how about this? If they were to disaggregate it by referrals to the hearings office?
Mm-hmm.
And then suspension?
Okay.
Is that okay?
That would be fine.
Those two major-
I, I think what I'm looking for is a snapshot to see, is there a difference? And if there is, is there something that we can learn from that? Because we know, again, we know where the problem is. And Ms. McLaughlin, did you have a next step?
Yes, I do, but weren't you, you wanting to look at seventh through 10th graders, not just the high school numbers, ninth through 12?
They know what I'm looking for.
Okay.
I'm, I'm talking about the, the comparison of what happens in a middle school transition to high school versus when they're together and sort of inculcated into the program of expectations that exist within a secondary model.
Okay. So my request has to do with slide one in the responses, it was the graph that was referrals to the hearings office. Because the reassignment reconsiderations and exclusion recommendations, which, is exclusion supposed to be expulsion? Or what is that? I mean, what is, how is reassignment different from exclusion?
What that graph, if you want to go back to the graph, it should have been graph one.
Yeah, the very first one.
The hearings office does three types of cases. We have referrals to the division superintendent, that's for school-based misconduct, it could result in expulsion. Then we have recommendations for reassignment specifically for charges in the community, it cannot result in an expulsion. Exclusions are a separate category altogether, and that's for a student who has been expelled or long-term suspended elsewhere, and they're seeking to enroll in Fairfax County Public Schools during the term of that expulsion or long-term suspension.
Okay. So the red line, though, is any time you guys from the hearings office are recommending a reassignment?
No. The red line is any time a school sends a case to us on the basis of a criminal charge related to community-based crimes.
So where's our chart on our, our normal involuntary reassignments that come out of your hearings office?
Where you would see that is in the annual report, because that's a decision. If you look at the blue line, that's the school-based misconduct. Anything that happens at school, it could result in a return to school, it could result in a reassignment to an alternative setting, it could result in an expulsion.
Well, I, I got to tell you, I've got a concern with this chart because since it's a public document and the public's going to look at it, it really isn't clear. I mean, I'm, as a school board member, reading this and thinking that-
I would agree. I think what, what Ms. McLaughlin, the point she's trying to make is, is that the vernacular that's understood in the community is that reassignment is, is understood to be a student being reassigned.
Because you said the blue line is our line, that the blue line is what is being sent-
Referrals from the building to-
Right, right.
To the hearings office.
Yeah, so I got to tell you, then maybe create another purple line, but something should be based on, this blue line is who's coming to your office from our principals? And then where's the line that says what you're, you're, how many are you recommending for reassignment? Because that, that's reassignment recommendation based on a criminal charge.
Right. This data that was put together today was specifically put together to answer Mr. Moon's discreet question. The hearings office annual report, which you've received, it's posted on the public web, it is meant for public consumption, is a 27-page report, it includes all of that data.
No problem, no problem.
I think, I think if we're going to get to what- I think if we're going to get to what the next step should be and to close this out, I think that this slide potentially needs a little bit more clarity in the labels because of how these terms are interpreted in the community. These are known terms, so I think reassignment recommendations doesn't quite cover it. So would it be sufficient to say, provide clarity to the referrals to the hearing office slide, and then you all know what we're talking about? Because if this is going to be posted for the public, I agree, there does have to be some clarity to that in terms of how it's understood. Would that be all right?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, is that it? Okay, well, we're 28 minutes over, so, but thank you.
Yes, we're all set? It is lunchtime, right? So everybody happy with being back here at 1:30?
Sure.
20 minutes, okay. Thank you all very much.
That catches us up by-